Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is the City of Los Alamos City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, September 20th, Madam Clerk, will you please do the roll call?
Mayor Chirco.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
And Councilmember Nefolda.
Here.
City Attorney, I think we're going into closed session next, is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council now adjourned to closed session to discuss items A through D as listed on this evening's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. We are returning from closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council has returned from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Protem Hasselbrink.
Please join me in honoring our flag. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Lord, I just thank you for this evening. I want to lift up all of our first responders and all of our essential workers. I thank you that you would continue to strengthen them, encourage them, and shower them with your peace. I pray that wisdom would prevail in these meetings, that we would use knowledge, understanding, and discernment, that none of us would be guided by our own selfish motivations or ambitions, but that we would be very mindful of the responsibility that we have to do what's best for our entire community. I thank you in advance for the good things that would come out of this meeting and that we would move forth in grace and compassion. And Jesus may, amen.
Next, we will have a presentation of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Awards by Police Chief Eric Nunez.
No. Mayor, I'm going to ask you to come down, but not right away. I'm just going to talk a little bit about Mothers Against Drunk Driving.
Sure.
And then I'll call up the officers one at a time, and then I'll go ahead and read a few things about each one of them, and then I'll go down there with you to present them the certificate.
Sounds good. Take it away, Chief.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council and City Manager. You know, and the reason why we have two recipients is because of COVID, we weren't able to honor our first recipient in 2019. You know, drunk driving is still the number-one cause of death on our roadways today. And although because of groups like MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, a lot of their programs, the legislation that they helped create and put together, and the enforcement action of our officers, we've been fortunate to see that number of deaths and injuries go down. But just to let you know that every two minutes, someone is injured in a DUI accident in our country. And when I say injured, some of those injuries are lifelong, you know, paralysis, head injuries that they never recover from. So they're very significant to some minor injuries, but every two minutes, if you think about that, you know, within the time that we'll be in this meeting, how many of those injuries will occur because of drunk driving in our country? And then, when I first started in law enforcement, which was many moons ago, they used to have a program called Every 15 Minutes, which we still call it today, which is a program that tries to bring awareness about drunk driving, because then, every 15 minutes, someone was killed by a drunk driver in our country. I'm glad to say that, you know, 30 years later, that numbers have been inverted, and it's every 51 minutes versus every 15 minutes. But if you think about it this way, in terms of the amount of injuries, that's around 263,000 injuries a year caused by drunk driving. And in terms of deaths, right now, and for the council's benefit, I know they've seen these already or know about them, but we're wearing a badge right now that is to honor the 20-year anniversary of 9/11, and those firefighters that had fallen and our law enforcement partners that had fallen on that day. But this is, and we know how many people were killed during 9/11. Our officers will be wearing this badge, by the way, since, they've been wearing it since 9/11, September 11th, and they'll wear it for one year. But approximately three and a half months after 9/11, the same number of people were killed because of drunk driving. So it gives you some proportionality to that whole problem that we're dealing with. To round it off, it's about 10,305 people now currently that still are killed by drunk drivers. So we take drunk driving seriously in this city. The officers that are represented right now, mind you, they aren't on a specialized task force like a lot of cities have people that are specifically doing DUI enforcement. That's their whole lot in life, and it's a lot that, you know, they hold honorably. It's definitely an honorable thing to do. Our guys have to do calls for service like everything else, but they still manage to enforce DUIs. And for each year, we rest as a department approximately about 50 to 60 drunk drivers in this city that could have led to injuries and deaths. Some of them actually had accidents that led, you know, that we didn't get to them until after they had the accident. But our guys are out there, and gals are out there actually enforcing DUI, and there are, a lot of them are what we call drug recognition experts, because drug driving is just as lethal as drunk driving. So first off, I'd like to introduce our first officer, our 2019 recipient, and Mayor, if you can come down here, I'll go ahead and hand this to you. If I could have DeAngelo Gossett come to the front count. All right. Okay. This is like being at home. I think I know who my boss is when she gives me the mic and hands it over. I just wanted to read a few things about DeAngelo before we have that photo op. But DeAngelo began his law enforcement career after graduating Golden West Police Academy in 2012, and he graduated as the honor recruit. Of all the recruits there, he was the number-one graduate. He was hired by Signal Hill Police Department in 2012, where he served as a range master, field training officer, drug recognition expert, taser instructor, and school resource officer. While at Signal Hill, he earned a meritorious conduct award for preventing a suicide. The City of Los Alamos Police Department was lucky enough to hire him on September 30th of 2018. Officer Gossett continues to serve as a field training officer, and most recently, he has become an operator, we call them operators, but it's a SWAT officer, on our regional SWAT team, the West County Regional SWAT Team. Officer DeAngelo Gossett and his wife Carolyn have been married for over 20 years and have three children, Malachi, Kayla, and Ayla. He enjoys spending much of that time with his family, and he lives local, and enjoys archery, hiking, and camping, and made 14 DUI arrests back in 2019. Just want to say congratulations, DeAngelo. Say a few words?
I'd just like to thank Los Alamos for the opportunity to transfer over here, be close to my family, spend more time with them, and arrest people on these roads, and protect a citizen for you.
Thank you so much. All right. Let me go ahead and put this over here. Hand that to the mayor, thank you. Now, I'd like to call up Officer, or actually Detective Evan Flynn. Evan graduated from Golden West College Police Academy as well, and was hired by our police department August 9th, 2019. In 2020, Officer Flynn became a member of the Mobile Command Post Team and Serious Traffic Accident Response Team, which we call the STAR Team. Earlier this year, Officer Flynn promoted to detective, and most recently, became a field training officer responsible for the training of our newly hired patrol officers. As with Officer Gossett, he has a lot of trust from the command staff and the supervision. Evan and his lovely wife, Juby, is a dispatcher for Whittier Police Department, met when they were both cadets in Rhea, which is where they now make their home. In his spare time, Evan enjoys hiking as well, paddle boarding, skiing, definitely weightlifting, and renovating their home. And during the 2020, which was a really odd year for, obviously because of the pandemic, he still managed to arrest eight folks for DUI here in our city. And I just want to say congratulations to you, and thank you so much for the good work. I know you have family that you said you would like to bring up, and that would be great if we could have them come up for photo op as well, and if you'd like to say a few words as they're coming up. Okay.
Well, like my colleague said, definitely thank you to all of our great citizens and our lovely department. This last year's been really tough for law enforcement as a whole. A lot of officers are struggling to find reason in the job anymore, but I'm actually really happy I worked for Los Alamos. I have an admin, administrative staff, and members of the department that truly love the job and truly support us in all of our endeavors. It's a breath of fresh air in current state.
Thank you very much. If I can say a few words, yeah.
And I just wanted to chime in here and say that we, we on the City Council, the city staff, and I know our residents for sure really appreciate the great work that you all do. In terms of the drunk driving, I mean, the work that you do saves lives. This is something tangible and real. I was driving down Los Alamos Boulevard a couple of months ago, and a drunk driver flew by and hit an innocent vehicle. And our PD was there probably within 30 seconds. I don't know how they were there so quickly, but...
I was in the right place at the right time.
You were there, right? Yeah. And, you know, it's really impressive. Obviously, we prefer to catch the drunk drivers before they cause an accident, but nevertheless, you know, you guys are appreciated, guys and ladies are appreciated by everyone in the community. And when I talk to residents about what makes Los Alamos so great, they always bring up the police department. And you guys are like rock stars out there, so we really do appreciate everything you do. Do a picture now.
Chief wants to talk to more, some more, he usually does.
No, I noticed that we have a few officers in the back that are lending their support to the officers that were shown, that were presented the awards tonight. I want to thank them for being here. But the gentlemen that are in the back right now are just like everyone else, that it's not on duty. They're committed to protecting, you know, and serving this community 100%. And like I said, we're highlighting the performance, and it's a good performance by these officers, but everybody on our team is making DUI arrests and other kinds of arrests that keep our community safe. So I want to thank you guys in the back for being here, and just want to say, stay safe tonight, and have a good shift.
Okay, next, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker, and I do see that we've got a couple of speaker cards, so we'll take these first. We've got a card from Ronald Bengoche, Bengoche, I think. Come on up. And thank you for submitting a speaker card.
Well, I didn't gotcha, Bingoche, but I've been called worse. My name's Ronald Bingoche, and I'm born in Anaheim, California. And with the exception of two years of serving in the US Army, 1967 through 69, I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm here tonight for item 11C, and I want to thank Honorable Mayor and Council. I should have addressed that first. Pardon me. You got me. You got me. I didn't got you. So anyway, I just can't thank you enough for this resolution. I don't know if you, I'm a small voice. I'm speaking for hundreds of thousands of veterans in Orange County. And I don't know how much history you have. I got involved with this effort in a small part in 2014 with the place down the road, and it became a political football. And a little frustration, there's a lot of veterans out there that we suffered some things when we came home. And regarding the family, this seems, maybe to you, this is a very small effort, but I can't tell you how grateful, as veterans, we appreciate what you're doing. You're not talking the talk, you're walking the walk. And there's been more that's been accomplished since June 22nd, when Irvine couldn't figure out what they were doing. And the city's coming as a coalition, the veterans' coalitions. We got squared away, I was, I had to watch my French, I get a little off-base, but it's amazing. This is a huge step, and the message is being heard loud and clear throughout the west end of Orange County to the east end of Orange County, and hopefully it lands in Gypson Canyon Road. We need a home. And it's not for guys like me, the veterans, because when I, it was my time, when the Lord comes, and I appreciate your prayer, young lady, when the Lord calls me, my bones in the ground, I'm where I need to be. But it's for the loved ones and the families, and for other brothers to go out there, remember and share. So it just means so much to so many. And I hope we get it all in favor and people over here. It's an honor for me to be here tonight and representing all those that are out here that aren't speaking, but they're listening. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service, sir. Okay, next, we've got Jody Rubenes. I'm going to mispronounce your name, too.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. It's great to be here in person. It's been a couple years. And our star from last time, we had International Walk and Bike to School, is past Mayor, Shelley Hasselbrink. She got a lot of, anyway, a lot of photos. But I'm here to let you know that we are having International Walk and Bike to School Day on October 6th. That's a huge event across the United States. I'm just here to bring attention to it and hope that you'll join us at the corner of Bloomfield and Cotella at 7:30. And if you want to post anything on social media, hashtag #I'mWalking, and that will be to LAE Los Alamos Elementary School. So thanks for supporting Focusing on Safety. It's for the kids and gets them ready to learn in the day when they're walking and biking to school, but traffic safety. In fact, I live across the street here, and there was a pretty serious pedestrian accident a couple days ago with a car on a child headed to Weaver, and those things happen. So now that we're back in our cars driving, let's encourage more safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And you said October 6th, is that right?
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, yeah, won't be too bad. We only have one elementary school, the other four, the other three schools, they'll be having events, but not mass walking to school. We just couldn't get the high school kids to all hold hands and walk to school together.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the audience? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to council announcements. We'll start with Councilmember Dobie.
Friend, Mike Friend, am I okay over here, Mike Friend? Great. All righty. So what I've been up to is I had my HR Commission Committee meeting. I was able to attend two Orange County Mosquito Vector Control District meetings, and I would like to share my Tanya's treasures. Since the last time we met, Valentina's Pizza, they are outstanding, thin crust is something that I highly recommend. And the young man behind the counter, he just blessed me so. He was so flustered because it took so long, and the look of peace that came over him when I assured him that my children and I were just fine and that the food was delicious was, I could have paid him, he looked so happy. Extreme sushi, right over there, it's near where the 7-Eleven is. I need to get my streets together, but it's on Cotella with Vampire Roll, highly recommend that. And then I found a new, I was looking for a new accountant and bookkeeper, Mally and Hasset, right here in Los Alamos, over on Howard, nice little firm, super small, but they have already sorted me out so well that I am no longer afraid of my tax bill. Well, kind of, but anyway. And then on a suggestion from actually Mayor, because we were talking massages, he said his wife goes to Queen Massage. I went there, and at first, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to y'all, the massage was okay, but then the guy did some small-digit manipulation with my fingers. I had a tendon that I pulled probably over a month ago, and he did something. I don't know what he did, but my finger has not hurt since then. So I tipped him half of what that massage cost me, because I am no longer in pain. And then I would like to give a super shout-out to our Parks and Recs and our school district, because apparently there was a little snafu with field usage, and our city heard about it, and it was just a miscommunication. And instead of doubling down and, you know, exerting what their rights are, because obviously they have them, you're like, you know what, let's kind of negotiate and make it so that our youth sports can be comfortable, and they really worked with them. And I'm so appreciative of that because they did not have to. The school district didn't have to, and our Parks and Recs, who I will always sing the praises of, did not have to, so thank you guys so much. And then as a side note, I would like to encourage all of us, because this is something that I try to do and I try to encourage my children to do, when you see someone in uniform, just say thank you for your service. It really does speak volumes. They might not let you buy their coffee or their snack that they're getting, but the look on their face, they really do appreciate when we take the time and just say, thank you for your service. So I would encourage us to do that. And those are Tanya's treasures.
Jordan, Councilmember Nefolda? Let's hear Jordan's treasures.
No, they have to be Jordan's jewels.
Well, I can vouch for Valentino's.
It's good. I had a...
Got to be more expressive than that.
Yeah, I know. I had my, our special meeting of the West Com Board. I went to the 9/11 ceremony, which was very nice, the Serve Los Al, a couple Saturdays ago, got the family out and picked up some trash. It was a very nice event out there. Shout out to the Parks and Rec. Attended the street fair, spent a few hours, saw some performances, saw one of the bands out there, it was really good, really good job, guys. And just like to give a personal thank you to Ron Noda. I know that I had a couple constituents email me a few things. I forwarded the email to you, took care of them, they're very happy, so thank you.
Councilmember Bates?
I also had the privilege of attending the 9/11 ceremony, I think, which was very appropriate, done very well. And then the Serve Los Al was a lot of, a lot of fun, and I think it contributed to getting the attitude of community members that, hey, serving your community is really special. And we had a lot of people out there doing it. The mayor did a wonderful job introducing people and handling the ceremony. It went very well. I also had the privilege of attending the 5 and 10K and the street fair on Saturday. It was very well done, well organized, and I thought the fact that our county supervisor and our state senator were both there, and that that said something, too, about the place of Los Al in their minds in terms of being a very important and viable community in their respective districts. And then lastly, I spent a very long meeting, and I'll be involved this weekend, or this week, on Wednesday and Thursday at the League of California Cities in Sacramento, but we had a very long meeting of the REVEN Tax Committee. And what some of you may know, and I've mentioned this earlier, is that how property taxes distributed has been changed by state legislation. And unfortunately, it doesn't recognize that last mile where the goods are being delivered. So a lot of the money is being retained by those cities that have big distribution centers, and very little of it is getting out to the community where there's actually wear and tear on the streets. After about a two-hour meeting last week, the REVEN Tax Committee voted to place this on the league's agenda, and if it's passed, we will be asking the legislature and the governor next year to take a look at that legislation and develop a program that's fair for all the cities that are involved, not only the distribution centers, but all the cities where the goods are delivered and use their highways to deliver these goods. And it costs us money to maintain those highways. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll report back after the league meeting later this week in Sacramento.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I attended the Casa U Shelter Poker Tournament. That was at Judy Kublow's house, owner of Green Street Interiors, raised a bunch of money for Casa, which was nice. It was one of the first fundraisers we've had post-COVID, or before COVID hit. City manager's quite the card shark and probably one of the best poker faces I've ever seen in my life. I think you made it to the final table? Yes, you made it to the final table. All right, that was a rhetorical question, you made it to the final table, so... Yeah, he's quite the shark. So that was really a lot of fun. We also celebrated Kenny Brendan Mary's 82nd birthday there, which was great, is a huge supporter of Casa, those kids are his kids, he refers to them all the time as that, and just a big supporter of the city and also Casa. And then coming up, I just wanted to remind everybody, we've got the Pacific Air Show coming up, October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. It is in Huntington Beach, but we get blessed with housing, the Blue Angels and Canadian Snowbirds here at the Joint Forces Training Base, which means on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we get our own personal airshow as they take off from the base and land at the base. It's a big deal. The Blue Angels are booked usually five to six years out. This is the second time in three years we've had them here. So the Blue Angels will be there, Canadian Snowbirds, a bunch of parachuters, OCFA will be doing a water drop on our city manager, anybody else who's out there. It's just, it's a really great event, it's a free event, and there's something about standing in the sand with the Pacific Ocean, watching these magnificent planes fly over. It's better than any desert Air Force Base I've ever seen, and it's just, it's a neat, neat weekend to bring the kids out and just enjoy where we live and enjoy our military. And that's pretty much about it.
Excellent, thank you. I've got a few items, so I'll try to be quick, but I attended, as I do every month, the Orange County Sanitation Board meeting, a couple of items to report from that. A couple of items to report from that. OC SAN collects approximately $318 million in user fees every year via the property tax bill. This is how we pay for their services. Collecting fees in this manner reduces the cost for OC SAN as it eliminates the need to invoice, process and manage payments. Part of the process calls for a public hearing to disclose the parcels and fees being charged for this service. We held a hearing on this matter and the board adopted a resolution so that the county tax collector and treasurer can now proceed with including the OC SAN sewer fee in the upcoming tax bill, which is $343 for a single-family residence. This continues, the district continues to have one of the lowest sewer fees in the state at less than a dollar a day for regional sewage collection, treatment and recycling services. The other matter related to OC SAN, we received a presentation on this last month, is that outreach efforts have begun for the Los Alamos Trunk Sewer Project, which is slated to begin construction in October. It will rehabilitate two pipes and the associated manholes along Seal Beach Boulevard and Los Alamos Boulevard, Cotella Avenue, Oak Street and Lexington Drive. And the intent of the outreach, and the reason I'm bringing this up, is so that we can inform and remind the community prior to start of construction of the project activities, the benefits of maintaining these regional waterway infrastructure. And also, you know, there is going to be quite a disruption to traffic and to our, to our way of life for a little while. I mean, it's, it's something that needs to be done and it's a positive, but you know, we have to be prepared for some delays and build time into that when we're commuting or taking kids to school and going other places. I attended a breakfast meeting in Seal Beach with our supervisor Katrina Foley and other Orange County mayors. It was a great chance to talk about a number of things, including funding for cities. Supervisor Foley, one of the things she did was she called out and gave kudos to Los Alamos for having one of the highest vaccination rates in the second district of Orange County. So that's a great thing. On a related note, I apologize for missing last month's meeting. I tested positive for COVID after a family vacation. When I tested positive, I was relieved I had been vaccinated and my symptoms were mild. And I'm just using this as a chance to encourage others who have not yet been vaccinated to please consider doing so. It's really the best tool you have for protecting yourself and minimizing the risk to those you love. The data's out there and shows it's very effective primarily at keeping people out of the hospital and keeping people from dying. So an issue that many of you may have heard about, I know everyone up here has heard about, is that the state passed SB 9. The governor just signed it into law. This new law essentially eliminates single-family zoning in California, meaning someone can build multiple units on a property in a neighborhood which was historically zoned for single-family residences only. So obviously this can dramatically change the character of neighborhoods. It's another mandate from Sacramento, no funding, sort of figure it out cities. We're taking all control from the cities is sort of the state's mentality here. So this is, this is going to be an issue for us cities, even if the intent arguably is well-intentioned in attempting some way to drive down costs. I'm not sure that that'll be the, the ultimate outcome of that. So keep an eye on that. I attended a recent mayor's call where we received a presentation from an organization called CommunitiesForChoice.org. I would encourage our residents to take a look at their website to see how you can help with their efforts to try to pass a constitutional amendment to prevent the Sacramento from taking local control in manners such as this. Supervisor Foley also invited local mayors to participate in a celebration and parade for Olympic athletes in District 2, which is her district. I was proud to attend on behalf of Los Alamos. I got to meet some really impressive Olympic athletes, including a number of gold medalists. It was, it was a really neat event and a great chance to meet these people who are so dedicated and really impressive. Our local Olympian unfortunately was not there, but there were a number of others. On September 11th, I attended Serve Los Al. As Councilmember Bates mentioned, I got a chance to speak about the anniversary of 9/11, the 20th anniversary. Once again, Serve Los Al was a great event for our community. It was a lot of fun and as Councilmember Bates mentioned, it really shows people that it is, it is a worthwhile endeavor to, to give back to the community and it really is fun. I mean, you get together with a lot of people. Everybody's in a great mood, having fun, helping out, feeling productive. So as usual, great job to city staff for putting that on. In some respects though, city staff does too well of a job because, for example, I was slated to pick up trash with my family. Councilmember Nefolda was on the same duty and there was hardly any trash. I mean, I think our residents are just not littering that much in our parks maybe, but then if they do, Public Works picks it up. So it was nice, but, but I'm not going to say do a worse job so we have stuff to pick up, but maybe, maybe we could redistribute the assignments so that we feel a little more productive. You give us, you give us that satisfaction. This past weekend, I attended the Glow in the Dark Run, Race Los Al and the Street Fair. You know, in past years, our, our city race was on the base, which was wonderful, but this year it was a little different. We got to run through the streets of Los Alamos. And you get a little more of a community feel because you get a lot of people who just happen to be in the area. The base, again, it's wonderful. It's been wonderful to run on the base, but you're only running into people there who went specifically for the race that morning, other than people who are stationed on the base. Here in Los Alamos, I ran into a lot of people who said, oh, I just saw a lot of commotion, so I drove over. I was grabbing a bite to eat. I decided to come over and check it out and I thought it went extremely well. I got really good feedback from a lot of people. So again, I sound like a broken, broken record, but great job to the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you also to Senator Umberg and Supervisor Foley for coming out. Councilmember Bates was also there. Thank you for coming out. And I ran my first 5K and I survived. So that was my only goal, but it was a great event. And that's it for my announcements. Items from the city manager. City Manager Simmons, anything to report?
Actually, sir, I just wanted to invite our Parks and Rec Director, Emlyn Noda, to actually give a recap of some of the events over the weekend. You've all done a fantastic job already, but I think she wanted to hit some of the high points for us.
She'll improve upon what we said.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Just wanted to report, we had a very successful first memorial care, Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach, Week of Los Al presented by Southland Credit Union. Got to plug. And it was a wonderful week. I thank you all for your support coming out. We had 150 volunteers at Serve Los Al come together and serve the nonprofits, help pick up trash in a couple of our local parks. And we had about 14 service projects that we were able to complete. We had free, you know, dental extractions and fillings with LaSonic Health Clinic. And we actually had a dog that was adopted by a new pet owner at our Pet Expo. So that was really neat. Then we had Family Day on Sunday that was sold out. We had art workshops during the week, a lot of social media contests, and then our race, 40th anniversary, we had 600 in our race. We were very excited about that. We didn't really know what the numbers would look like, but thrilled about that, hoping we can double it next year. And our street fair, very pleased to say that in two days, we had about 2,000 to 2,500 people come through and enjoy community performances, multicultural performances and end the night with our Beatles tribute band. And it was all a dream come true, to be honest. So very pleased with how it all turned out. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anything else to report? Okay, we'll move on to the warrants. Does anyone have any questions about the warrants before we?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick questions. On page two, I noticed there that we have a fairly large expenditure for one person. I was just wondering for what period of time that was for?
Of course, sir. That is for Kevin Garnett, one of our instruct, our contract instructors. That's actually a year to date. So the last, what would that be, two, three months?
Got it. Okay, thank you. On page seven, there is an expenditure there for $2,000 and that's for the bus transportation for the summer youth programs?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. What other one? I missed one more on, oh, I see. Up above on that page, there's $1,778 for life chubby. Please fill that in for us.
Of course, sir. It's actually a, a check-in, checkout software that we use for the preschools. So with the advent of COVID, advent of COVID, but with the introduction of COVID, we were looking for a contactless way to actually check in the children and then also just the added security feature of having, making sure that kids are going home with the right parents. So that's just a software that we've implemented recently.
Got it. And then on page 11, could you just fill in a little bit more information on the, the city of Brea and the communications technology there for $4,000?
Sure, of course, sir. It's actually for the Integrated Law and Justice Authority of Orange County. I believe the chief actually is a past president of, of that group. So I think it'd be best to hand that question over to him.
Sure.
Yes, Councilmember Bates, we, ILJ AOC is what it's referred to in its acronym. And we, what that is for us is a regional approach through our county-wide approach for certain things, like we have a in-time solutions, which is a, a scheduling software system that we use that interface or interfaces with the court system that allows us to reduce the cost of overtime for officers when they're being put on subpoena because we know when they're going to be off on vacation, that kind of thing. The other technology is investigative technology where we use Coplink, which is an investigative tool that all the county and now really it's across the country. But Orange County was the, was the, was the, the agencies that started this and ILJ got together and formed a group that would do this. We also have a citation process that's run through the court system that allows us to interface with the courts. It's actually improved the efficiency effectiveness of, of countywide law enforcement and investing in projects that the counties see mutually beneficial with the, this is the count, the courts, public fender's office, as well as every police agency and sheriff's department. What happens on that is they have a couple of operate, they have a couple of budgets in there. There's like an operating budget that we year, that we have to pay for yearly and it's pretty much the same, it changes a little bit. But then we have a capital expense for projects that we have put together and that can be increased or decreased depending on, you know, what projects we're running with for the year. Essentially what we do is those figures like right now are about $1.5 million for both operating and capital. And so what happens is that is spread across every agency and it's, and it's based upon population.
Yeah.
So what, for, for Los Al, that means we have about 0.37% of the cost that we shoulder bear and which is the second lowest, you know, and...
Villa Park is the lowest.
Villa Park, actually, yeah, is the lowest. So we get our money's worth out of that system and belonging to that affiliation and it's pretty, it's ran well and it, they have legal services as well. And Ratan and Tucker actually is who they use. And, and it's, 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 like I said, it's a very efficient and effective way to do countywide projects.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to ratify the warrant?
I'll second.
Okay.
The motion by Councilmember Bates, seconded by Mayor Protem Hasselbrink. Roll call, Mayor Chirco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. What items would the council like to pull?
I'd like to pull C.
Okay.
Request, we just briefly pull B, D, F and G.
Okay. And then on A, city attorney, I was not present for last month's city council meeting. Can I vote on approving the minutes or shall I abstain?
You may abstain if you want. If you've had a chance to review the meeting and review the minutes, you would be welcome to vote.
Okay. I watched, I watched the meeting. Very exciting.
Thank you.
And I read the meeting minutes, so I'll go ahead and vote on that. But why don't we, why don't we take each of these and then we'll just vote on it as a group then? Let's start with B. Councilmember Bates, did you have a question on B?
Yes. Could we maybe just have the city manager talk about the, potentially, how much are we really talking about here and how would that impact our budgetary considerations?
Of course, sir. This is basically an opportunity for the city to attempt to recoup money or expenses that were used during the time where the city was staffing the point of distribution or the pods throughout Orange County. Staff members, myself included, went down to the different sites and worked them. And what we are doing with the county is trying to actually find a way through FEMA to actually have that money reimbursed to us. Potentially, to date, we're looking at around $9,000 or so. However, there may be more in the future depending on whether or not we're successful and then also if there's going to be any future points of distribution that need to be run. However, that is not in the offing.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, next, item C.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little bit more background on this important matter. I've been working with Tara Campbell, she's counsel in City of Yarvalinda, about getting this passed through all of the cities. It was important visually for every, for all the cities to be on board with this. Anaheim has approved this unanimously to allocate this piece of land. This should have been done years ago. Unfortunately, it became, as our speaker said, a political football within the city of Irvine, both on the resident level and the, on the city council level as well. They lost focus as to why they were doing this. It was sad and it was frankly embarrassing that we don't have a veteran cemetery here. The closest one is out in Riverside and for families to go and visit their loved ones out in Riverside when we have land here. What they're trying to do here is just as a county, all the cities support this, which they have so far. There hasn't been a city that said, no, there's still, still that have to go on the agendas. But in turn, what they need to do is years ago, there was a bucket of money that was allocated by the state of California for the veteran cemetery in the city of Irvine and that's what the legislation currently says. What they want to do is they want to take this resolution that was passed by all the cities, take that up to the state and ask if they would just reallocate that bucket of money to a veteran cemetery in Orange County. So with that, I would plead and actually beg my council members to support this 1,000%. We're a military town and it's the least we could do to support our veterans. Thank you.
Yep, sounds good. We, at least I am proud to support this. I think it's really important. We have a final resting place for, for those who have given so much and sacrificed so much for our country and all of us.
I agree because I'm one that would have to go to Riverside if I wanted to see my daddy.
The Marines will weigh in in favor of this too. I'm a former Marine.
There we go. Jordan, you're the only one. I'm not looking at him, you don't have to look. No pressure, no pressure.
I'm prior service as well. The army, the armor supports this.
Is that good?
Okay. Let's move on to item, what, D?
The question on item D, I, I'd like just maybe a little explanation. It seems that this is very convenient, I'll use that term, and that it's very easy to lease the vehicles. Maybe you can just explain to us a little bit of the analysis you're going through to determine whether we should just buy them outright, lease them, or in essence, can we extend the useful life of some of these vehicles, especially in public works, to get as many years out of them as possible and not have to trade them in before the time? I, I guess what I'm trying to get away from, and I don't think we do this, is to just have an automatic schedule where every five years or three years, we rotate vehicles if in fact we don't need to. So maybe you could talk about that.
Of course. And to back me up, my, our Development Services Director, Ron Noda, is here and will probably tell you that he will be pulling out his hair if we go through the leasing and the purchasing of vehicles again very soon. The long and short is that we're always looking at where exactly the operational, I'll call it sweet spot with regards to replacement is. We have a number of vehicles that obviously are high volume use, such as our police cruisers and such, but we also have vehicles that don't get a lot of use on a regular basis or very limited use. Backhoes come to mind, also some of the public work trucks. And so we look for ways to actually try to get as much as we can out of them. Now, one of the things that we are undertaking this year is actually going back and looking at the council-approved... at the council-approved guidelines that we have in place and how we evaluate vehicles. And what we'd like to try to do is get away from some of these automatic renewals and essentially put ourselves on a schedule where we can evaluate the true cost of the repairs that are being done versus the anticipated costs of the repairs that are being done. And by doing that, we've come out with that nexus of where exactly it makes sense to lease vehicles versus purchase them. That being said, this will be an item that I will look to return to the council here in probably the next six to eight months because there also, we'd like to start having inclusion of electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles within the fleet and also the infrastructure that goes along with supporting those vehicles.
Got it. That's good.
Okay, very good. Next, I think, item F.
On F, my question is simply this. I don't have problems with what's being recommended, but I would like to see a request from the school board, you know, requesting us to make the change. I didn't see anything attached to this agenda item that actually showed me a request from the school board saying, yes, we'd like to change the name of that street. And I think for us to take action as a council, it would be good for us to see something from the school board making that formal request.
Yes, sir. So I can say that I believe the original request did come through a school board member and was, the request was vetted through the, I'm sorry, is it the President's Council?
I believe it's their, they call them their cabinet.
The cabinet, I'm sorry, sir. So there was no formal action taken by the school board, but of course, if the council would like, we can ask them to take a formal action on this.
I just have a quick on the history of this. This was presented to me a couple of years ago
Right.
by one of the high school counselors over there, Tina Hearn, saying, you know, you control the streets, you know, what would it take to be able to do this? I think it would be a great idea. And he said, let me run it up the flagpole. And she in turn was able to get the support of the school district. There was really nothing for them to do because it's not their property, it's not their sign. I had brought it to Chet pre-COVID and then the world stopped. So it was kind of one of those things that it was a timing thing, but now because we're replacing all of the street signs and everything, the school board is supportive of it, but there's really nothing for them to do, approve or not approve it.
I could always pass a resolution saying that they support the change to
True. Right.
Yeah, or we could change it to say, subject to a formal request by the school board, I think we can do it. But I, again, I, I'm not one who would vote on this without their taking the initiative to make this request. I just want to be out there saying, hey, we're going to change the name of the major entry to the high school without a request from the school board. So I think we need to see something formal is what I'm saying. Either a letter, it could be a letter from the school board or the superintendent based on his discussion with school board members. But I think we need to have something in the file with a formal request from them to make this change. That's, that's kind of my point.
Can we, can we just pass this subject to receiving a letter from the superintendent or a school, you know, school board resolution or direction?
Yeah, if I could, because this is being proposed via, approved via a resolution, I think the cleaner way to do this would be to table it and bring it back once you've had that direction from the school board.
Okay.
Can I, I just, I'm sorry, I'd just like to ask one question of Director Noda. Obviously, we're going through a bidding process right now. One of the values of doing this at this time period is that there is no additional cost since we're replacing all the sites to start with. I just want to make sure that taking that extra time doesn't throw off our schedule with regards to replacement. I don't think that would be a problem, but if I can ask.
I'm aware that the bids are in and we are right now drawing up the, the list. Next council meeting is October. I, I feel we could still get in on the time if we get it approved at next council meeting.
I mean, the other option is we approve it and we just ask the city manager to please get a letter.
Right. I mean, could I just
Be okay with that?
I'm good.
Make it on the condition of, and it wouldn't be a letter of request because it's already been requested, but a letter of support.
Yeah, just confirming that
Right, that they're good with it.
They're good with this, we're good with this.
Right.
That way there's no
Yeah, because we don't have a formal letter of requesting it. That's the problem.
Right, because they didn't request it, I did.
Excuse me?
They didn't request it, I did.
Okay.
So, but if we can get a letter of support from Dr. Pulver with the school board saying, yes, we support
Yeah.
the change of the
I'd hate to have it come back and two school board members say, yeah, we want it, and three of them say we don't. That wouldn't be cool.
So it does say here, the school district stated its preference for Griffin's Way.
Right.
How is, is this just verbal or?
Right. Exactly.
I just, I think it's a good idea to just get
We need some
formal clarification so there's no dispute and
I would just prefer not to delay it another month
Right, right.
for another meeting if we could just do it on the condition.
I think we can do that. If you get something from the school board or school district that says, no, 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 then we'll
Then we can return the item.
Yeah, you can return the item.
Well, how long do they have to make that decision?
Because I don't know if anybody else knows, but the school board got a lot going on at this exact moment. This might be low on the
Superintendent, superintendent's fine too.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not going to go out on a limb without having the board behind him.
With the council's concurrence, I believe that Dr. Pulver and I can find a resolution to this.
Okay.
I'm good.
And next is item G.
Could we talk, and maybe the chief can give us a little bit of background here on the, the ongoing cost? Because aren't they going to update this 800-megahertz system? So this is, basically what's being requested here is approval of the joint agreement. But isn't there a plan in the works to upgrade the system at some point? Or where are we with that is probably a better question.
Yeah, I could, I could probably defer some of this to Captain Byerly, but I will tell you that the system itself, we're probably some years down the road, probably at least, I believe, 10 to 15 before that's going to be looked at. And that's not what this is really about, language and getting the proper signatures and, and that. But if, unless Captain Byerly has anything to add to this for the 800-megahertz?
Not really. Good evening, Mayor City Council. I'm talking with the 800-megahertz team. It's the, the agreement doesn't really go into the details as to upgrades that are pending, but it was more for the cost allocation and cost sharing. Currently, what they, what they use is a, is a percentage. And for a smaller police department, it doesn't really work in our favor. So what they're doing is they're changing that, that cost sharing plan to go kind of what they call like a per radio type cost.
Right.
And it benefits us. And if you look at the upcoming budget, it's like we have an $800 credit coming. And in talking with them, they're talking about future budgets are going to include more credits to us because we're not going to have to pick up the slack. You have other departments that are really high-end users of not only radio, but the, you know, the system itself. So it's going to be much more equitable for us in the long run.
Got it.
Okay. I think we're looking for a motion on the consent calendar, full balance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Jordan? No, not opposed to anything here. All right. Next, we'll move on to
With or without a letter, it doesn't
It's fine. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, next, item 12A. City Manager Simmons, are we moving forward with 12A tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we get a report?
Yes, I'd actually like to invite Director Noda to give the short presentation about the zoning ordinance and the amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight, it's a discussion item for, I mean, a, a public hearing for changes or revision to the zoning for the single-family dwelling. In April 28th of this year, at a planning commission, Commissioner Gary Lowe expressed his concern about the single-family dwelling parking requirement that was brought about, brought forth at the code update. He asked the items to be brought back to planning commission for discussion. So in June 23rd of this year, again, 2021, staff brought back the zoning ordinance amendment. Basically, the issue there was a single-family resident in our current code, if you build, if you have, if you either remodel a home or build a new home and it has five or more bedrooms, you have to have a three, three-car parking garage, a covered parking garage. And so the plant, members of the planning commission wanted that to be discussed at the meeting. Issues with that, there was a couple of issues. One was they were saying that if you bought your home in Los Alamos several years ago, four bedrooms and they were all upstairs, you raised your family in them and then they moved out and they, you became empty nesters and you know, became seniors. Sometimes you want to remodel your home and maybe put a bedroom downstairs, right? Because of going up and down. And then, okay, again, according to our requirements, you'd have to build a third-car garage. And then the second thing was, there's some houses or some land in Los Alamos that there was not enough space for a third-car garage. Therefore, you're handcuffing the property owner for their quality of life because they would maybe have a hard time going up and down the stairs. So again, this was brought back. And again, in August 25th, the planning commission adopted the resolution and recommended the city council to revise the ordinance to single-family dwelling irrespective of the total bedroom count of a two-covered parking garage. And so that is what is brought forth to the council.
How's a, how's a, and I'll ask everyone else what questions they have, but how is a bedroom defined? Is it defined by square footage of a room? Like if someone adds an office, calls it an office, does that count under our code as a bedroom?
There, yes and no. So I think if I remember correctly, a bedroom is a minimum of 70 square feet. You have to use it as a place for sleep where you have to lay your head down, but you can't consider a bedroom if it has direct access to a garage.
Okay. Okay, other questions?
Ron, how does this compare to the requirement for the multifamily complexes? And are we being more restrictive in those areas than we are now in single-family? And, and have they thought about that and should that be the case? What, did that discussion come into play when this item was being handled? I guess is my question.
Not necessarily with the, first, to answer the first part, multifamily housing and parking is more restrictive. You have to have more.
Yes.
Because not only do you have to account for the people residing in your units, but you also have to have space for guests, right? So that's why you have to have more parking if you build a multifamily. In terms of the planning commission, I'm going to, if my memory served me correct, I don't know if Michael remembered, but we didn't really discuss multifamily property because this is a single-family
Right.
you know, discussion.
I will just add, sir, just because SB 9 and SB 10 was brought up and obviously that is going to be a large concern for the city going forward. We will have to revisit all of our parking standards here in the next year, especially as 9 and 10 are implemented. And it will speak specifically to single-family, also multifamily, and how exactly those lots are parked going forward.
Yeah, I, I guess my concern and where I'm going with this, and I think you've picked up on it, Chet, is that I'm concerned that open parking areas now in condominium complexes that are being used for parking will be repurposed for additional condominium units and we may not have anything to say about it. And it'll just be a parking nightmare in our, you know, condominium areas here in the city and the whole of what we call the apartment row area. I could see where that would become a nightmare for us if, if, if we don't find some way to handle that issue.
I agree completely, sir.
Any other questions on this item?
I just have a random question. What about the houses that only have one? Like over in, where is that? I guess it would be carrier row area. There's a slew of houses that only have one garage. I don't know how many bedrooms are in them because I obviously haven't been in them, but you can obviously see there's only one car. How would that affect whatever? Or is the point to three or more bedrooms, you have a two-car garage irregardless effective going forward? Is that, is that the point?
I think some of those homes that you're referring to were like built, you know, much, they're a much older home. And so they're grandfathered in. If they do any type of remodel, then they have to, you know, they have to follow the standards of our parking requirements.
We, we do have one of those homes. Our home was built in the 40s and it was a, it's a one and a half-car garage, I think, because back in the 40s, families only had one car. And we used to have the ordinance, I don't think it's there anymore. If we added any square footage onto the house, then that grandfather clause went away. So we could remodel as long as we weren't adding to the footprint.
Is that, is that still the case then? Even with this, that would still be the case, right? As long as you don't, those homes don't add square footage, they don't have to add a second
The ordinance that I was talking about that is now gone is if, it used to be where if you added any square footage onto the house, you would have to include a two-car garage.
Yeah, but I think something like that is still in effect now, right? If you do, if you do
We got rid of that a few years ago.
I would have to get back to you on that. I know, I believe, I don't want to, I don't want to say, but I would have to get back to you on that. I know that we're doing a home remodeling over in a neighborhood and we had a commissioner approach that and it's, it's what you're saying, we're holding them to the parking standards.
Yeah, I thought it was three or more bedrooms, minimum, two-car garage. I thought I read in the information that y'all sent.
Well, yeah, but if we vote, if we approve this, it's any single-family dwelling has to have two parking spaces. If your home is older, you're grandfathered in. However, if you remodel
Remodel.
or add square footage, depending on what those
Right, because the ordinance was if, not if you had bedrooms, if you had square footage. Because we wanted to add a den and in order for us to add the den, we would have had to build a two-car garage before we could add the den. It had nothing to do with bedrooms.
So it's one way or the other, though. It's, it's either square, if you add square footage, you have to do it, or if you remodel, you have to do it. But under some circumstances, you'd have to do it. We just don't, it's not clear what that is right now.
Not to make this more complicated, but
Please do. I'm looking for complication at this point.
It's early.
But is the advent of ADUs and obviously how exactly those play into this calculation also changes what exactly the likelihood of our ability to enforce what we would want the parking standards to look like going forward. So again, this is another example of, again, state mandates that really do not take into account what exactly the, the world looks like on the ground.
And this is all irrespective of ADUs, right?
Exactly.
We cannot, we cannot require additional parking for ADUs, right? So just could fill up our streets with, with additional vehicles.
Yeah, if, if I could add just a bit, just in the simplest sense, what the ratios we're looking at this evening are your prototypical single-family residence where someone's going into a single-family zone parcel to build one single-family home. And we're saying that would require two covered spaces. If you have that existing home and they're trying to expand the fifth bedroom, as Ron had mentioned, that would be permissible as long as you have those two spaces
Spaces.
existing, whereas the way the code was amended most recently, that was triggering a requirement to add additional covered parking. And so that's what raised concerns with the commissioners. That was, that was a difficult requirement to meet for most homes in the city.
Right.
So could we add, based on number of, I don't know, I guess like adults, like for every two adults, you have to have a parking spot? And that's with the addition of spaces. So like for, not what we're dealing with, like for the ADU issues, whatever, if you add on a dwelling and you add adults, then you have, you have to add a parking spot? Could that happen or you can't do anything about the ADUs? You just let them build and they park in the sky?
Damn. I would say typically in, with zoning issues, you want to avoid trying to characterize what the composition of the household should look like, just in terms of equal protection concerns and trying to define what
Tell me how I should say it, Mr. Michael. I know you know what I want to say.
One way to do it would be to look at the total bedrooms.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm being flippant.
No, no, nope, I like that. So can we do that? See, I knew you would know what to say to me. Can we do that? Something like that? Because like she's saying, she wants to add a den, that's not a bedroom. So then you do still have spa, and then, you know, to the, for the, our senior seasoned, seasoned folk that might want to add a space, then it's not necessarily a bedroom, it is a sitting room? And then they get away from the parking thing?
Yeah, I'm unaware and perhaps Ron and I can follow up on whether, I, I don't know know whether the simple addition of square footage triggers additional parking at this point. I think the code is written presently would just look at the bedroom count.
This is the old code.
And the, the proposed amendment here is actually consistent in some way with what the, how the code was written prior to the most recent update. The only difference is the prior iteration would differentiate between zones. So in the R1, where you have this typical single-family residence, there were always two parking spots required. But that same prior code, when you looked at R2 or R3 zones, for example, would have a different count. So what the most recent revisions did in part was say, okay, single-family residences should have the same parking requirements irrespective of what zone they're constructed in. The Planning Commission, that was their direction, that's what they wanted. What they ultimately decided was not consistent with their direction was, the code that was adopted eventually is consistent among all zones, but, but it requires additional covered spacing, covered parking spaces once you go above the four-bedroom count. And they want to peel that back to what had previously applied only in the R1 zone, which was if you have a single-family residence, you have to have two off-street covered parking spots. And that's the end of it. So whether it's four bedrooms, six bedrooms, arguably, whether you're adding a den, you know, it's going to be the two spaces.
And if you're adding an ADU, we can't require.
And then that's preempted by state law, where if it's an ADU, we can't require parking spaces to be replaced or added.
So they could have a four-bedroom house and two ADUs, and especially in our neighborhood with the lot so big, and they would need two spots.
It's possible, or, or, you know, with SB 9, and there's a potential that they could create a duplex on that lot.
Which is why my neighbors, right, which is why my neighbors have 12 cars and two spaces.
The city needs a shuttle, right? We gonna capitalize on this. We get a shuttle and then make a little spot. Maybe we work with some of our businesses that have larger lots, and we can let them park, and then we shuttle them, and we charge them, like, you know, a hundred dollars a month or something. We gonna make money on this, and we gotta figure out something. They gonna make us do it, right? Michael, am I, am I getting anywhere?
No.
That's why I asked Michael.
We're getting to a motion. All right, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
This is a public hearing. If we could open for, to the public and see if there's any comments.
Thank you, Wendy. Any, any comments on this item? Hearing none, we'll move to a motion.
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Mayor, if I could please read the...
You read it before we vote?
...by title, please.
Okay.
So before the City Council for consideration this evening, is ordinance number 2021-03 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Section 17.22.030, Table 3-05 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning the Parking Standards for Single Family Residential Units. That's ZOA 21-02.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The ordinance passes. It'll be, it'll be on the agenda next month on the consent?
This will come back for a second reading and adoption at the next regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 13A on the discussion items, economic development programs.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
I, I, I like the direction we're heading. I think this is an appropriate direction. Obviously, the, the two programs here, when you start looking at numbers, are the Parklet and the, the Los Albaux. I, I like the two concepts, but I'm hoping what you're telling us with this agenda item is these are budgeted amounts, but any specific projects with the details will come back to council before they move forward. Is that kind of what I'm understanding by this?
Yes, sir. I think that there's an opportunity to do a, a lot of launch and education here. What, this is more, what I'll say is conceptual in nature, allows the council to see our first soiree into economic development as we start to develop more programs. Sadly, I think that we will need a special meeting in early October to address some other issues, and so at that time, we can bring back a fully-fledged and flushed-out itemized list for you.
Just to take it back, I mean, just for the benefit of the public who, who may not have read, the, can we get a, just a quick report on it?
Oh, of course. Mr. Noda?
Sure thing. I have a PowerPoint. I don't know if you guys can see it, but I think there's handouts in front of you. There it is. Thank you. So, um, the, the team in Development Services has, came up with these economic development program, and it's for, for, that's gonna be brought to you, council, tonight. With COVID-19 and, you know, the start of it, and we're still in it, it has affected many businesses, as you know, and especially the small business sector. And Los Alamos heavily, heavily relies on the small business sector, as we don't have really any of the big-box retailers in our community. And so, again, we are asking to bring out these programs. We're gonna do it in little phases. This is something that we're gonna push out in the next six months. It is very ambitious, but like I said, you know, with this capital improvement program, we're gonna go out there and we're gonna go full head, full steam ahead. So the first one that I want to bring up here is, and this is something that when I moved over from Recreation Community Services Development Services, is, again, we're big over there, Recreation Community Services is branding. So we're gonna start our branding campaign. It's shop local, eat local, play local, stay local, and support local. And, you know, shopping local is easy. We would encourage the community to come in and spend their dollars here at a Los Alamos based business. We encourage the community to eat at a Los Alamos based business. We have a lot of youth groups here, or, you know, stuff for families to do, such as Code Ninja, Friday Night Light, AYSO. So again, play local, stay local. Of course, we have some hotels here, so please stay local. If you have family members coming in, encourage their family members to stay local, and of course, support local. We want to give our nonprofits some shout-out there and support them as well. So again, we're gonna go full-blown branding campaign, and our branding campaign will involve social media, banners, email blasts, mailers to the city, I mean, to the residents, et cetera. So that's the first thing that we're gonna go out there and try to do. And as I want to point out there, that we're trying to incorporate the graphic of, over there, of our curb painting that you approved a few months ago. The next program that we're gonna head into here is the Welcome New Business and Resident Packet. Again, one of the things that I identified with the team is our relationship with our business. We need to increase our, our relationship with the businesses and our, our, our property owners as well. You know, Councilmember Doby and your Tanya Treasures is a great avenue, because again, we want to tie in our business, because they're vital, we care about them. So whenever you're a new business or a new resident, we want to hand you a folder with pamphlets. And again, what's in the pamphlets are small, a restaurant guide, a shop local guide. It has, gonna have important numbers in case you have an emergency, like you need to contact Southern California Edison or Southern, or SoCal Gas. And then, of course, we have some small item giveaways, which I placed on your desk. It's a buttons, and of course, these little, they tell me that these are really popular now, these little stickers that you put on your water bottle.
Yep.
I guess I'm old, I don't know, but whatever.
Yes.
And then, of course, we have pens.
Yes.
And then we have other things that we're gonna do for our small item giveaways. But again, it's to, again, increase that communication, increase our relationship with businesses, and of course, residents as well.
Quick question?
Yes.
Will the chamber information be included in that brochure as well?
Absolutely. Other things will, in there, you know, again, we have is, you know, we have a, I can't remember, but there's a partnership program from the Recreation Community Services that we're gonna put in there. So again, if a business wants to come in there and market, just like we just did this past weekend at the, the street fair, or upcoming at the trunk retreat in Halloween, they can come out there and, you know, give back to the community. And trunk retreat, we ask them to give candy to the kids in return. They get to market their business too. So there's a partnership program in there, and so there's gonna be a lot of information there, including we develop a relationship with the, the small business of Orange County, and so they have magazines and information there. So we're gonna put information in there as well. Okay?
Ron, quick question on this one, for the resident packet, which I love, by the way. How do we know, I mean, new businesses, obviously, they get a business license. How do we know that new residents have moved in?
So that's a relationship with our realtors. So we have, we have to start that relationship with realtors. So we have an economic development supervisor, Alicia Booth, who's currently reaching out to the local realtor and saying that if you sell a house in Los Alamos, please let us know, and then we'll send them this resident packet through the mail.
And property management companies, too?
Absolutely, correct.
Because what I would like, I don't know about my colleagues, but it would be nice to have a sheet in there with not only employee, you know, city contacts, but also council contacts and what district they're in. So if they want, I mean, we pride ourselves into getting to know our residents, and now that we're in districts, I think it's even more important.
Okay. Noted.
Thank you. We're moving on to the business spotlight. So our admin manager, Chelsea Wilson, started this off. We're gonna continue this, again, with our economic development supervisor, Alicia Booth, but it's a three-minute video where we go out there to the local businesses and we highlight the business. We ask them questions, tell us a little bit about your business, a little bit about your history of your business, why'd you come to Los Alamos, et cetera. It's all done in-house, again, with Recreation Community Services, they're very talented over there, making the videos and editing the videos. And it's, again, it's, it'll be posted on our YouTube and on our social media.
Very cool.
Our next one here is breakfast with the city manager, right? The concept that we have here, it's, again, increasing the relationship between us and our business community and our property owners, property managers, and of course, residents are, will always be allowed to come in as well if they want. But it's, it's an interaction, we call it breakfast with the city manager, but it's really interaction with city staff. And so the concept here is all departments will be there, from PD, recreation, you know, admin, of course, and of course, the development services team, code enforcement, building and safety. So if a business want to come in there and say, listen, you know, I have some concerns about my security, then there's a police liaison there to, you know, work, help them, assist them through that. Hey, I want to expand my business, there's our building and safety people there to assist them through that. Because, again, I've, I've tasked Economic Development Supervisor, Ms. Booth, to go out there, and she comes back with a lot of questions. A lot of our businesses have questions, and so this is just another interaction to bring the two closer together. We propose two times a year, August, the reason why we want, we picked August was that's the time that we re-up our business license in the city. So that'd be a great time for people to come in to talk about, you know, we do get a lot of people, how do I get a business license? And so we can walk them through that, and of course, a few months later, March. So it's free, it's, the cost there is, of course, helping with the marketing and helping with the little coffee and pastries in the morning.
Actually, Ron has to bribe people to come and have breakfast with me, so that's why.
Thank you.
Well, and, and I don't say this, I won't be mayor when this gets instituted, but, you know, to the extent it'll help, you could put breakfast with the city manager and mayor and force whoever is gonna be mayor at that time to attend as well, if that would draw extra businesses.
That'd be $5,000. Let's just up that ante.
Well, high-end pastries.
The next one is the Parklet. So this concept here is to basically provide opportunities for the business to come and gather. As you are aware, because you are, you are, all council members and some of our commissioners that went through the town center mixed-use plan, that there was a, a need or a request to have a place to meet and gather. So this is where we want to identify, and we have identified Pine Street, where we just had the street fair, and we're gonna make it nice, like to put a picture of what a Parklet would be like, and so that we would make it nice with full plants, seating area and everything, so people could come in. And this is economic development, because we're encouraging them to shop at a restaurant nearby or shop at a restaurant in the city. Come to the Parklet, eat their dinner with their family, and included in that Parklet will be a stage where we're gonna have performances, movie night. Sometimes we have identified possibly a family night, where we come in and, you know, we could have like a reptile show for the kids. And then there's gonna be a seating area where you bring your own chair. There will be seating area, again, where we actually put out round tables with tables and chairs and canopies. And then there will be a little area in the back where you, you could, you know, have your kids play games like cornhole or a large Jenga or a large Connect Four or anything like that. So again, the concept is shop local, bring your dinner or, or whatever, to come have a good time outdoors, a community gathering, and at the same time, you got a concert on one end, your kids playing on the other end, and you're sitting there enjoying your dinner per se. So again, something that we would like to do. Yes?
Okay, so there are only so many restaurant, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mike, friend. There are only so many restaurants that are right there. If we did this, like, on a monthly basis, could we maybe coordinate, like, some deliveries for foods that are still Los Al, but a little further out? So like if someone wanted coconut rabbit or somebody wanted extreme sushi or whatever, figure out a way to bring, so they don't miss out? Because otherwise, it's like, okay, well, yeah, Valentina's and the Fud Place and Madera's, they are about to get the plug, but then, like, you know, maybe, what is this, like the Brew House? Or Taco Surf? Or what was the other one that you were saying? The Mexican food place? That nobody knows the name of?
Mexican food.
I'm not going with that.
Casitas de amigos.
Okay, casitas de amigos.
Yes.
You know?
No, absolutely. You know, one thing I want to mention is we want to do here is, this is an opportunity, we call it Sidewalk Saturday, where on Saturdays, if you're a local vendor or local in the city business, you could come out for a very nominal fee to pass out coupons, to advertise or market your business. Where, you know, we, we want to also include, because I feel that, you know, a lot of the surrounding cities, we're kind of one community, we share the school district, we want to give opportunities for other businesses, but they're gonna have to pay a higher fee.
I heard that.
You know, and get less of a priority. Our priority, of course, is to assist the businesses in Los Alamos first. Nominal fee, they get priority for the spot. But so, but yes, definitely, we can work out a, you know, some sort of delivery service or, you know, maybe encourage the business to come out and sell, you know, have a pop-up tent and sell there as well.
And Ron, quick question on the expenses, the equipment and supplies of $100,000. I'm assuming the majority of that is a one-time?
That is correct. So the majority of that, of course, is for the Parklet itself that's being built. There's a stage involved there. And then, you know, we have to have protection, so there's like water barricades and, and umbrellas that we have to purchase, plants. It's a one-time expense, and the great thing is we get to keep that. So then, next year, when the street fair rolls around, we're gonna bring out the Parklet, and we have a Parklet there. Possibly, we talked about internally, one other thing is combining with our beer garden that we had this past weekend, right, to expand that area. We have Winter Wonderland coming up. Again, that's on Pine Street as well. Winter Wonderland, as you know, council, is a very big event now, so we might have a secondary smaller stage at one end of Florista and the large main stage on the other end of Florista. So yes, it is a one-time purchase that we can utilize. And again, if, if this is great and we have a demand, the Parklet and the stage is movable. We could go out to another area that's closer to another restaurant or plaza, and we could pop it up there as well. So it's movable, it's ours to keep, we own it.
And make a whiskey garden next time, right? Sure. Okay. I want to see you on whiskey.
No, you don't.
All right, we're moving on. Last one is our Los Albaux. It's like a script program here, again, to encourage economic development. The best way I could easily say this, it's kind of like a gift certificate that the city will give. We targeted $50 per household. There's approximately 4,400 households in the city of Los Alamos. You will receive a $50 Los Albaux to spend in the city of Los Alamos. Yes, there are some rules and some regulations, some stuff that you can't spend the money on, such as alcohol. We talked about lottery tickets and cigarettes and cannabis-related items, et cetera.
Well, what about alcohol from a specific, like the Roadrunners? You couldn't use it in a Roadrunner's spirits?
I, I want to add, everything is still, you know, everything I'm showing you tonight is draft form, from the graphics to the rules. So yes, we could, we could look into that closer, correct. But, you know, again, the, the concept is you spend your money, it's like a gift certificate. Businesses love the gift certificate, because even though you get 50, you're probably spending 75, so you have to push out $25 of your own money. And again, it's based for Los Alamos. You can't go to somewhere. I, I, we are currently trying to work with the county, with the businesses over there in Rossmore on that fourth corner, right? We're, again, we're, we're trying to make that happen, but again, we're trying to incorporate We're, again, we're trying to make that happen, but again, we're trying to incorporate and assist the businesses in Los Alamos, again, and then at the end of the day, or end of the month, the reporting period, they come back to the city and say, I collected X number of Los Albaux, and the city writes that business a check, right? We've contacted a couple cities, I believe one city was in Utah, they said this program is extremely well-liked and successful in their city. So again, we're doing, we're looking at here, so again, if we do fifty dollars per household, we approximately have 4,400 households, it's 221,000 approximately for the Los Albaux, there's some miscellaneous costs to distribute it, to market, et cetera, so there's the total there, it's a big chunk, 227 approximately, okay?
Ron, real quick, and that, I know we talked about it in Budget and Finance, that 221,000 is taking the assumption that every certificate would be cashed in?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the, you know, we've, like Councilmember, or Mayor Protam, Housebrink said, we talked about this in our budget meeting, and I've talked to the city manager about this many times, you know, I love this idea because, you know, a house gets fifty dollars, they get that benefit, right, but then they go to a restaurant, the restaurant gets that fifty-dollar benefit, so we get it twice within our city, and like you said, you know, somebody's going to spend more than fifty dollars, so it really benefits our business, and our residents will be happy as well, so my only concern is, you know, the administrative work that will be involved in something like this, you know, getting out 4,000 of these certificates, and then tracking it and signing up businesses, and making sure they know what the rules are, but certainly something that, at least, I'm very interested in pursuing.
I think the management of the certificates are going to require some administrative planning for, example, if you have a five-unit condo complex and three of them are vacant, do all three of those, and are those bucks going to sit in the, you know, the mailbox, or is somebody going around and picking up those bucks? So how that's handled, I think, has to be thought through pretty carefully.
And it won't be perfect, fortunately, there's not a lot of vacancies nowadays, but it won't be perfect, but, you know, we're going to, it'll be a.
The intent is there.
Yeah, it'll be a productive, worthwhile endeavor, even if it's not 100% perfect.
Could it be like a digital thing, like Groupon? Like, once you cash it in, it automatically cancels it? I don't know how Groupon does that, but I do spend a lot of time on it.
No, that's where we're looking at, we're looking at even possibly not even doing the hard copy like Los Albaux, but actually giving them a debit card, you know, so there's a lot of things, just like Councilmember Bay said, we are still in the process of finalizing it, finalizing rules, finalizing graphics, everything, like I said, you see tonight is a draft form, but, you know, the team here, we're working on it, and, you know, I tell them, I told them when I came over that they probably don't like me very much, because I always tell them to do, you know, I have this huge aggressive list to do, but they're like, no, don't worry about it, Ron, so if you hear differently, let me know, but but no, the team, and again, you know, Craig's team over in finance got a big part of this too, because he's going to recoup everything and cash out the check, so again, the city staff here is tremendous, and, you know, we're trying our very best to, you know, support the city, resident, business, nonprofit, everything.
And this, I would just say, think it through carefully, because a lot of the businesses you're going to be dealing with may not want to take, you know, some pretty piece of paper that has fifty dollars stamped on it, even though it says City of Los Alamos.
Correct.
They may be much more encouraged to take a debit card that they can immediately get credit for, rather than having to wait to hopefully, in their mind, get the money back from us at some point in time, and can they float this in the meantime? So I'm just saying, think it through.
No, absolutely, we even think about stuff like, each restaurant, each business in Los Alamos has to sign up to be part of this program, because we already anticipate, there's going to be businesses that just probably feel the need that they don't need to do it, for whatever reason, and that's perfectly okay, so we have registration forms come in and all that, and then, we, again, part of the marketing is, these are the participating businesses in Los Alamos to redeem your Los Albaux.
Yeah.
So yes, we're trying to think it as best as we can.
So could you register residents, too, by like email address, and now you've got like a nice list where you can send additional information on future projects that you plan to do?
Possibly, yes, yes.
Is the intent still to get this out by, is it Small Business Week at the end of November?
That's correct, Saturday after Thanksgiving, yes.
Okay, and?
Yeah, again, I give kudos to the team, if you approve this, like I said, it would probably take a few days to really think it through, probably a week or so, but we're ready to go, like, I have them prepped, like, we have contacts with the printers, and we have restaurants and all that stuff, and we got teams ready to go out there and do all the groundwork and the footwork and walk it and all that stuff.
Yeah, and to the extent we need a special meeting or anything to keep the schedule moving, I mean, we can all be available via Zoom or come in.
Correct.
I'm speaking on behalf of everyone else, but don't correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
Yeah. No.
These folks have no problem speaking up, but the other point to make is, this is money we got from the federal government, this is not coming from our general fund, right?
Correct.
So this is, this is exactly what this money is intended for, it's to help our local community, our local economy, our businesses, so I think this is a great way to do that.
Correct, yeah, the funding's coming hopefully from the ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act.
What do you mean hopefully?
Well, you guys still have to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure we know what it is.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you guys have to approve it.
If we approve it, it's coming from the ARPA money.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that, in the material that goes out, that needs to be clear, that it is federal funding that's paying for this, so.
Copy that, yes.
Residents don't think it's coming out of the general fund.
Or Measure Y, right?
Yes, sir, good point.
Okay.
I have one more slide, it just shows you the total amount, if all the programs are approved here, right, Welcome New Business, 4,200, business spotlight, I said, is all done internally, breakfasts with city managers, 3,000, Parklets, 135, Los Albaux, 227, approximately, and so altogether estimated total cost, again, from the ARPA fund, would be 300, approximately 370,000 dollars.
I make a motion?
I'll second.
Watch out now.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very well, Ron.
Nice.
Thank you.
Get to work. Just kidding, thank you.
What are you sitting here for?
Yeah. I believe that may be the end of our city council meeting tonight, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will do so in honor of Carl Stewart, Nisi Stewart's husband, who tragically passed away recently, a wonderful man, if anybody knew Carl, just a warm, friendly, wonderful guy, so very sad, and we're all thinking about Nisi and are here for her as well, so, thank you.